We ready, John? All right, John says we're rolling, so we'll get started here. We'd like to welcome you all to our county commission meeting this Monday, the fourteenth, day of September two thousand twenty here in Parowin, Utah. Again, this morning's meeting with an opening prayer offered by Bill Pressgrove. And following that, Marilyn Wood will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our dearest heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings that thou has poured out upon us and this part of thy vineyard. We thank you for the many blessings that are afforded to those that are visiting here in this part of thy vineyard. We thank you for the institutions that thou has given us to help govern and keep thy peace here in this, here where we live. We ask you to please bless us with thy Spirit, then we might be able to deal with the subjects and matters that we have in this meeting in a manner pleasing in thy sight, then we might do thy will in all things. And we ask these things humbly in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bill and Marilyn. We will now go to the approval of minutes portion of our meeting. And is there any discussion on the minutes? And these would be the minutes dated August twenty fourth, two thousand twenty.
Just one thing, John, where you recorded my report, it said that Curtis DeMille put large amounts of riffraff instead of riprap.
I don't know, he might have found some riffraff. Should we change that to riprap?
Well, twenty years from now, somebody might think, well, really? They were picking out the riffraff and making them into riprap?
I might want to change it. Anyway, I don't have any other.
Okay.
Probably spell checker.
Any other comments?
No.
Okay. Entertained emotion.
Yeah, I mean, we approve the minutes of the meeting of August, yeah, August twenty fourth, two thousand twenty.
A second.
It's been moved to second to approve the minutes of August twenty fourth, two thousand twenty. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Do we need to get another copy, or can you just pencil that one in, John?
I can, I can fix that page, so.
Okay.
There's, I think, two places for you. Should be toward the end. If I need to, I'll fill in the space with some hoodlums.
Oh, no, it's fine. I like it.
No worries.
No, no, it's fine.
It's good for humor.
Yeah.
All right, we'll go to departmental reports, and we'll go to our auditor. Dan Jessen.
So before I get in my report, speaking of the agenda, we were going to get that added, the part where we, or maybe it is added, maybe it's on the end, where you approve the, in the meeting, the purchases, the checks, remember how we were going to add that? Our external auditors were giving us a hard time. So I'm going to write it down on my notes, you write it down, maybe we can get together and get the language right.
Sound like a bowling ball.
So, okay. So for my condition, commission report, specifically pertaining to the auditor's budget, sixty-nine percent of my budget is utilized, and we're sixty-nine percent of the way through the year, with some one-time purchases that happen all at once done. So by the time the end of the year hits, we'll be good. An update on now the county's budget, county revenues specifically, I've been keeping an eye on those through the pandemic and resulting financial downfall. I gave a presentation a while back about county revenues, but just as to give you an update on that, sales tax is still looking good. In fact, we're still ahead of last year for sales tax. Building permit revenues are okay, but they're down from last year a little bit. TRT tax is way down, but it is recovering. That was the, that was the, really, the largest hit. And if they do allow us to do some sort of revenue recovery with CARES Act money, that's where we'll target first.
What surprises me about the building permits, because it's, buildings booming, but I guess it was booming more in twenty nineteen than now, but it doesn't seem like it slowed down one bit.
Yeah, and just, just the revenue, and it's just down a bit, but not, it's certainly not, uh, we're not, it's not crazy, it's down just a bit, and you could probably get a little bit more specific information from the building department, but. TRCC, so first of all, for, for the audience, TRT is our hotel taxes. As we know, the hotels were creamed, which means they also weren't, as the rooms weren't being rented, they were not collecting that, that tax, that transient room tax, which then goes back in to the TRT fund, which we then turn around and we invest back into the community in different ways. TRCC is the restaurant tax is down, but not as dramatically as the hotel tax. The, the story there, though, in fact, if you look at it, it looks almost identical to where we were in twenty seventeen. Not that twenty seventeen was a significant year, it's just that every year we have growth. So right now, we're, we're down as though we were three years ago, but it's, but it's fairly steady, it's following the same patterns. I, I think the, the main issue there is, is it's a capacity issue at restaurants. I mean, they, they can only fill so many seats if they have them socially distanced. So I think the, the people are here, they're ready to eat, a lot of people are, are now eating at home, but it's a capacity issue. I don't know about you guys, but we go out to eat, and there's an hour wait, and you look in and you see the empty tables, and you, you know, they're taped off, but that's the story of, of the revenues as well. So if we're seeing it here, the, the restaurants are seeing it also. Fuel tax was another one that we kept our, kept an eye on, we were worried because nobody was driving through the first of the pandemic. Fuel tax is okay, there's, there's quite a lag on it, and I don't have the updated numbers, which is two, two months of numbers, so basically, I'm looking at a three-month ago snapshot. So I think we'll be fine by year end, there's been a lot of people driving through Iron County, so I think we're good. So that's just an update on the revenues, yet to see how this thing will completely play out, but that's where we stand as of right now. On the expense side, most of the county COVID-nineteen expenses from the CARES money has been spent. A lot of the large ticket items, they take a while for us to actually get the items and write the checks, so we've encumbered the funds. I think George and Mike Phillips were going down to pick up handwashing trailers, weren't they trying to suck you into that, Mike? Wasn't that this weekend, they were going down to pick those up?
Yeah, they left yesterday.
Yeah.
To, and it went to somewhere down around Pace in Arizona.
Yeah.
They were, yeah, long story short, we were supposed to have them before the fair and on the manufacturers, and they had some material problems.
Some holdups.
So they, they finished them up on Friday, so.
So we'll get them here for future stuff.
They should be en route.
Do we know any about the tents? People keep asking me.
I talked to George about the tents yesterday, he was going to make calls while driving to Arizona to.
And I think we were looking at September on the testing trailer and the truck, too, so, you know, they, they made a good point when we were talking about what we were going to use the funds for. By they, I mean, the, the Department of Treasury guy saying the difficulty is actually getting, getting things purchased and put into use within the timeframe, and it's, it's true with these larger capital items. So we have, of course, we've now been talking about shifting some money towards doing an add-on at the senior citizen, the senior center. Paul can give us an update on that, we'll be talking about that for a while, but that's, that's kind of a new thing that we're going to have to do a budget adjustment so that we can shift some funds towards that, and that'll tie into the impact grant, which I'll talk about next, but. We're, we're waiting for the end of this timeframe of this CARES money, the end from our perspective is November thirtieth, the end of the impact grant is October thirty-first, because we have to have time to wrap everything up. We literally have to have everything wrapped up with a bow tied on it by the end of November, unless the federal government extends the timeline, which, of course, we have to plan for them not to, we just hope they will. If they will, that, that changes things, we can slow down a little bit. But for the time being, it looks like we're going to be, we're going to be good. I'm trying to forecast the way this grant is going, whether we'll be able to issue grants to all the businesses that we, we planned on. And not to get to that, because I want to give you a specific grant update, but trying to keep an eye on that, trying to also look at possibly doing some things like the senior citizen center, which, as Paul put it very well the other day, we're going to be pregnant with that pretty soon, so we'll, we'll need to do a budget adjustment to shift some funds around and make sure that we have money specifically set aside for that, and so we can get that money out the door also. It's tough to spend that, that kind of money and to spend it well on good projects, on stuff that is not a throwaway, that we can use for well into the future, won't be wasted, and have it all audit-proof, and while everyone else is also doing the same thing, so the vendors are overloaded, and it's, it's a difficult thing to do what they've asked us to do within that timeframe, so I think we're doing the best we can. I was, I was really appreciative that George, he got, he may have got just a little bit, a little bit eager, but he was certainly a little bit more ahead of the, ahead of the pace than some of the other emergency managers who are now are finding that if they go to spend some of this money, the vendors are saying, there's no way we can get it to you in this, this calendar year. And George is like, what are you talking about? I ordered all that stuff two months ago. So these things take time, and so you've got to get them in the pipeline and, and get them going so that we can put them into use, but. So that's really the expense side, of course, those expenses are not coming out of our normal budget, they are being funded by CARES dollars. So from the county's perspective, revenues are good, TRT fund is, is being really killed on revenues.
Well, and Dan on that?
Yeah.
On TRT?
Mm-hmm.
If it wasn't, there's really only been two major activities canceled this year, with Shakespeare and Summer Games.
Right.
And those were kind of out of, out of the control of a lot of those who were making those decisions, but.
Yeah.
I don't think of any other activities that Iron County has canceled, from the concert to the Independence Day Parade. Cedar City's held fourteen two-day tournaments, ball tournaments, all summer with eighty-plus teams, and, and then you look at our county fair, you look at the soccer tournaments, you look at all of this, that's really, as bad as TRT, it could have been a lot worse. That's really probably saved our businesses, is having those activities.
We're fortunate in Iron County that we have, we're right next to all this outdoor recreation. You know, I feel for some of these counties and cities that rely heavily on tourism that were shut down completely. We will, we will come out of this looking great. Utah as a whole will come out of this looking better than most states, and Iron County will come out of this looking better than most counties in, in Utah. So, yeah, I've, I feel for some of these, these finance directors and city councils and, and county commissions out there that have just, you know, you went to county, they had a double punch, I mean, they had oil prices drop and, and the pandemic, and, you know, yeah, so that, you know, things, things can be difficult. Luckily, sales tax, which is one of our major things, has, has done well. Again, if, if, if Utah hadn't did what they did and made a deal with Amazons and EBay's of the world to collect sales tax from them online, you would see a different story right now, if we were not collecting sales tax from those things, because our local guys have been hit, so. Luckily, and that ties right into our next thing, it's the local businesses that we know have been hit. Not all of them, some of them have been hit really bad, others have been doing fine, some have been actually doing well. As you know, we said, we, we worked with the cities to put together this business impact grant, Iron County Business Impact Grant, and year-to-date, and I, I start on here with my notes, if you wonder why I've been absent or flaky lately, it's because I have been just running full speed to process these grants. We have, we have year-to-date, this was as of last Thursday when I wrote up my notes, we had one point eight million dollars in small grants that we have issued to small businesses in Iron County. Those have, every one of those is literally, we have met with the committee, we have reviewed the, the local business that's given us their stuff, we have issued an award letter with a check processed in my office. So when I talk about this, this isn't like some federal program, this has been the committee that we put together, and we've been doing this. We're, we're issuing money on behalf of the cities that are participating and the county. The total size of that program as designed was six and a half million, and that was on an as-going basis, meaning as the tranches hopefully keep coming in from the state, we will issue those as we have the money. We, we had the first tranche, and we had, at that point, had spent almost all of the city's money that, from their first tranche, all of Parowins, all of Enix, and all of Cedar City's money had been, their first tranche had been spent, and we had spent county funds. The second tranche, we just received, and we're well into that second tranche, and so we're looking good, but, so, and then, like, over the weekend, I just looked, and I have a whole bunch of new applications, so I bet you we're probably up to somewhere around two million in qualified applicants of that six and a half million. I don't know if we'll get all the money out the door in that grant program. So I would like to continue to press the message out there, if you're aware of a small business that has been financially impacted, the way we're defining that is their twenty-twenty revenues are down from twenty nineteen's revenues. So if you just look at those two years, and if the revenues are down, and we're, and they, they have to say that, that it was either because they, they had to close their business because of the governor's order, or because they voluntarily chose to close their business, or because their business experienced a significant slowdown in demand because of the shutdown, that's what we have to tie this back to, then, and we can also count any specific expenses related to pandemic, whether that's, you know, sanitizer, PPE, if they had to spend some money to redo their, to put Plexiglas up or something like that. Those are the only expenses we look at, other than that, we're just looking at revenue lost year over year. So if you know of any businesses like that, have them apply. I see a lot of businesses that are, that are, they, they have the opinion that, you know, there's others that have been impacted worse than us, which is good, you know, they have that pioneer spirit, we'll, we'll, we'll soldier on, that's great, but, you know, we would like this program to be successful, it's not an onerous process, and we're working with them, even if they're not really sophisticated with profit and loss statements and all that, I can take their bank statements and do it. So please, spread the, spread the word. I think we had about a hundred and twenty applications that we had processed through last Friday, so a hundred and twenty businesses, not all of those have gotten grants, but I bet you ninety percent of them have. So we've really been working with them. If their, if their application doesn't look great, I go back to them and say, hey, can you, can you send me this, you're missing this? I don't, I'm not looking for a reason to not, to deny it, I'm looking for any way we can give them a grant and still cover our butts as far as what the program is covered for. Now, if they've made more money this year than they have last year, they're just simply not going to qualify, but most of those businesses are weeding themselves out before they apply. Anyways, that gets us back to what we were talking about, when we, when we have some money left over at the end, if we do, we have this senior citizen project, which we are going to have to actually earmark and set some money aside, once we start the project, we're going to have to finish it, but we may want to look at doing some other things, and maybe some private grants to maybe some of the larger nonprofits that we haven't talked about, giving grants, you know, SUMA was brought up, Summer Games was brought up. Also, there was money that we left on the table that we could have used in reimbursing ourselves for frontline law enforcement, so we can soak up a little bit there if there's a little bit of money left over. So we have options, we're just going to have to play it by ear at the end of the, at the end of this grant cycle, possibly do a budget adjustment, so. Anyways, that's the upgrade, the update on the impact grant. Anything else you guys want to say about that before I move on? Board of Equalization, we're in full swing, we were a little worried that this year was going to be, we were going to be inundated with people due to the pandemic, that we're going to expect their property values to drop. That really hasn't been the case, I don't know if that, we, we, we had an article in the paper, we, the tax commission sent out a press release, so I think that hopefully those things helped. We had a hundred and sixty appeals as of today, but other than that, it looks like it'll be a fairly normal year for the Board of Equalization. Board hearing dates are tentatively set for September twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and October first and second. Reason I say tentatively is we block out those dates, and then we fill in with appointments as, as we need to. Of course, a lot of them get stipulated off, if the, if the assessor and the property owner agree ahead of time, then we can stipulate, but welcome you guys to come, if you want to come, be a part of the process and see the, how the Board of Equalization works. Technically, you guys are the board. As you know, my office is the clerk of the board, and we hire a certified commercial and residential appraiser to come in and actually act as a hearing officer. But welcome to, you're welcome to come in, it's September twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, October first and second.
October what?
First and second. Carrie told me that she's trying to schedule them on the, on the two Fridays, so that's two Thursdays and Fridays, she'll try and fill them in on the Fridays first in two different weeks, that way if people are busy one week, they can hopefully come to the other one, so feel free to come in and sit, sit and, and witness one of those, it's a good thing to understand the process, so. And finally, this was not good planning on my part doing this grant program, but we are getting into budget season, I will be sending out budget worksheets to the department, to the department heads probably next week, and we'll start the process, it's September, we've got to schedule October budget hearings, which, of course, I've got to, got to coordinate the three of you and myself, and then every single department head, and try and cram that all into four different days over two-week periods, so we'll probably, I'm tentatively looking, look at your schedules, but I'm, I'm tentatively thinking, maybe we'll do a Tuesday, Wednesday on the sixth and seventh, and a Tuesday, Wednesday on the thirteenth and fourteen, or the fourteenth and fifteenth? I'm not sure what that is, I didn't keep good notes on my thing here, but. Normally, we try to do it on Mondays, but Mondays is when, A, we have commission meeting on one of the two weeks, and B, that's when our grant committee is meeting every Monday afternoon, so I'm going to be juggling the budget and this grant at the same time, so luckily, I've, I've gotten fairly quick at getting, getting through these and getting them processed.
And just heads up, the sixth and seventh is at Rural Summit, I mean.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, there might be conflict, so just be aware of that.
Seems like that happens every year, doesn't it?
It does.
They used to have in August, but they changed it to October this year.
Yeah, last year it was, because I know we had to duck out, and I'm going to be at that myself, the Wednesday, we got to go as part of that thing, don't we, Mike? Well, so we'll, so I'll send something out, and we can all look at our schedules and all that, but it'll be middle of October, because we've got to have a tentative budget by November first, and I've got a lot of work to do after we have our budget hearings, so, and a lot of work before we have them, so. Any other questions for me?
Depending on what the church does, I've got a kid hopefully going into the MTC on the fourteenth.
Okay.
But, but most likely, it'll be going to Home MTC.
Going to Home MTC, yeah. So basically, he just, he'll just tell all his friends goodbye and turn off his phone.
Send him over to Dan's, he's all experienced.
Hey, we've been doing it for two and a half weeks, Cooper flies out Wednesday, so.
Comment, don't beat yourself up saying it's poor planning, nobody planned on COVID. You're doing, you're doing an awesome job of, of managing all this.
You guys are going to hear from me again, I'm going to, I'm coming to USAC up at, up at, where is that, Homestead?
Midway.
Doing a presentation to all the commissioners on how to budget for a pandemic, so. Should be exciting, you guys get to hear from me again. This, I'll have, I'll have graphs and, and funny comics and stuff for that, that I got to keep you guys awake.
Sorry, I'll be gone on vacation, but I'll, I'll feel bad that I'm missing it.
You're not missing it.
Well, thanks, Dan, I, I'll echo what, what Alma said, Dan's amazing, he really is, and, and the way he's handled this grant program and the committee is just brilliant, and we really appreciate his, his expertise in these matters. Let's see, let's go to, let's see, we're to our tourism, Maria. Tourism and parks, are you doing Parks and Rec, too?
Yes.
Thank you.
All my spare time.
Use it in your spare time. Good morning. So starting out with tourism, we're at seventy-five percent of our budget in TRT. I did put in incorrectly forty-four percent on the restaurant tax, we actually have only spent fifteen percent, and the reason is, is because a lot of the restaurant tax is actually based on grants that we are giving out to individual municipalities and public entities, and so we're just waiting for them to complete their project and put in their paperwork. And we also haven't transferred the, the payment for the Shakespeare Bond and for the fair, so by the end of the year, this money will be, will be spent, so it's, it's not unusual. As Dan had mentioned, we are down in TRT. Restaurant tax is actually, it's kind of holding its own, which is pretty amazing considering that most of these restaurants are operating with only half of the capacity. Occupancies are down overall seventeen percent. If you look at, I printed out a kind of a big report, I printed it out big because it is, just so you can read it, but we have, it's an occupancy report, and it looks like this, and you can see, you can just, you can see what happened with COVID, April, we were down fifty-six percent in occupancy, May, we were down twenty-four, June, fifteen, and now in July, for July, we are only down three point seven. So we feel pretty good about what's happening in our neck of the woods in comparison to some of our neighbors. We, I'm aware of some counties that are running at about twenty percent occupancy, and a lot of that is due because they have convention facilities, and when people aren't meeting, their convention facilities are sitting empty. Average daily rate is down, which is what they charge for their room, it's down about eleven percent. So even if we do get to a point where we're running kind of equal or above, unfortunately, the rates are, are pretty low in comparison to years past, and so our, our tax revenues will not be there at, at that higher, higher rate. I included some of our visitation in terms of our visitor center, it's definitely, it's definitely down, we'll probably be looking at not being open on Sundays next year, just to kind of help us with our budget. I also included a report from our short-term rental compliance software, which kind of, it helps us keep track of all the short-term rentals in Iron County. Right now, we have eight hundred and fifty-five active short-term rentals, prior to COVID, we had about twelve hundred, so what that's telling us is that short-term rentals are either moving into being more of the long-term rental, like they're now, instead of renting it out to visitors, they're renting it out to people who are, who can live here, or they're basically just taking them down.
Quite a change, isn't it?
It's a huge change, so, which is interesting, because we know that a lot of, we know what's happening in real estate, and there's not a lot of inventory, so. So I don't know that people are, we did see a lot of people purchasing homes and condos so that they could put them into a short-term rental aspect, and now I think they're, they're looking at them as, in terms of long-term rentals, and also they want to live here. COVID definitely has impacted our lives, we've, we've been very active in advertising, you've seen, you may have seen our billboards, but of course, you probably wouldn't see a lot of the things we do because we put it outside of the area so that people will see it, who will come and visit. It is unfortunate, we don't have the Shakespeare Festival, or we didn't have Summer Games. The thing about the festival is, is that those, those people tended to come during the week, and they would spend more, and so we're missing out on that midweek business. And so the, the tournaments have definitely helped, there's no doubt about that, we are very grateful to those, to those groups, and we hope that they'll come back, we're working with them and trying to, to encourage them to come back next year.
Buck and a can from the, from Cedar City?
Yes, and we've worked directly. Yes, and we've worked directly with SU.
Told me I was on the phone with him the other day. He's, he said that the tournaments that have come were so impressed with how they were treated in the facilities that they, that will definitely say they'll come back next year. So that's awesome.
So we hope that they do. We'll see what happens cuz if California and Nevada open up, then they'll, they'll probably move some of that back. But, but again, we've treated them well, um, and our community has been very welcoming. We anticipate, we do have some big events, uh, continuing to come, which will help us keep, September will stay strong. Um, October actually looks pretty strong. Uh, we have the high school mountain bike races coming. Uh, we have one this weekend, um, out at Three Peaks. And then we'll have one in mid, mid-October again. Um, and then we also have the Belgium Waffle Ride, which is, um, yeah, a gravel ride, basically. And we're anticipating about five hundred riders with that.
Where's that route?
It's all over. It's several, it's hundred, it's a, over a hundred miles. So, um, my understanding is that they will go through Cedar City, out through New Harmony, around, um, and possibly up into Shirts Canyon. And, um, they like it to be hard. Like they like to see elevation and whatnot. Um, it'll be interesting because it's, um, they're planning on it the same weekend as the opening of the deer hunt, so.
Well, maybe they'll chase a deer.
Let's make the bibs orange.
They have been encouraged to look at a different weekend, but I, um, we'll, we'll get it figured out. Uh, the restaurant back, uh, the Restaurant Tax Board, uh, at the beginning of COVID, um, allocated some money towards supporting local dining. And they were wanting to do that again in the fourth quarter of this last part of the year, just because we know after October, it's gonna be a difficult time for our restaurants particularly. Uh, and we wanna extend that into the first part of the year. Um, we'd like to spend about twenty-five thousand dollars on that. And we have plenty of money in the restaurant tax. We actually had like a, a small fund balance, um, about a hundred thousand dollars that we would like to just utilize some of that money. Trying to think. And then, um, Brian Head is anticipating that they will be opening this winter, but they will be under a, a COVID plan. Even with, I don't, I, even with green, I'm not sure. They still have to have some COVID things in place, so. But let's hope for green by that time.
Seems like they would have lesser restrictions because most of it's outdoors. And I, and I realize, you know, there's, people go inside to warm and everything.
Yeah, it's the inside aspects in which it makes it difficult because the, the restaurant revenues are, you know, are part of what helps them be successful. So, um, if they have to limit the seating, which is what they've done this summer, then it's gonna be, it's gonna be difficult. As well as they have all their lessons, their kids camp, those things all take start inside and then move outside. So that's, they're gonna have to make some adjustments, so.
Oh, they get snow.
And then we hopefully get snow. But, um, it's showing, industry-wise and trend-wise, skiing is like, is the industry that shows the most promise in terms of recovery because it is an outside activity. And people really are looking forward to it. Let's see. And I think that's basically, um, where we're at. Uh, we have the Utah Tourism Conference, which is virtual this year. It's September twenty-third and twenty-fourth. Uh, I've included the link. Um, we'd love it if the commissioners would be in, um, would sign up and join in as they feel, as they find the time. Any questions regarding tourism? So, uh, and, uh, as far as Parks and Rec is concerned, we are at seventy-one percent of our budget, which is where we wanna be at this time. We are hoping, and my request goes out to Commissioner Adams. We are hoping that we can get some trash bins up at Woods Ranch this winter. Um, we take the, Bruce takes them away. And, uh, we end up having to take away about a, a full truckload of trash every week due to the, the winter use up there. If there was any way we could have some, some trash bins up there and have them removed or clean or dumped every, twice a week, tw- twice a month, that would be wonderful.
Hopefully we'll be able to do that. We've been having complaints cuz we're just, you know, just more people.
More people, more trash.
More, another truck and another person that we're, we really need. So had the guy from Medina call and say that, you know, we're, we're doing their bin out there once a week, or, or once every two weeks. It needs to be done every week from May to November. So we're, anyway, hopefully we'll be able to manage this. It will be easier in the winter. I'm sure, you know, capacity in the winter, so.
If we can, that would be great. We understand if we cannot make that happen, but it would, would be great to have that there. Just a reminder, if we have the five-mile picnic area coming online next year, we're gonna have to anticipate that in our budget for twenty twenty-one. So, um, I think we're supposed to be looking, going up and doing a field trip. Um, hopefully we'll do that before budget time. Um, if not, Bryce and I will go up there and we'll start looking at what will be needed if we, if we get that into our.
We'd love to go with you anytime. I, I anticipate that the permit is going to be approved very soon. They, they were impressed with the permit that, you know, that Mike filled out. And, and so I think we're gonna be able to go forward and get something done this fall.
We just, uh, wanted to let you know that we've had events certainly at our parks. Uh, Three Peaks has been very popular. We've seen We Rock come, uh, twice. Um, they just finished up this last weekend. We hadn't seen them for a couple of years, so we're grateful to have them come back. They're a nice little impact. And, um, also we have the mountain bike races as well. Right now, uh, Three Peaks Campground has been probably busier than ever. Uh, we've generated over six thousand dollars in camping fees. And to date, our, our parks have generated over ten thousand dollars in user fees total. We, since May, we have had four fires at the shooting range. Three of those occurred, uh, within one week. All were human caused, uh, due to exploding targets where it's not allowed out there. Um, so common sense is not always so common.
Gender reveal parties.
More gender reveal parties. So, uh, due to the fires out there, we've, uh, cleared out the debris and the old structures in the Cowboy Action Range. Um, we've had a user group out there who kinda fought us on that a little bit. They liked it the way it was, um, but unfortunately it just couldn't stay the way to, couldn't stay that way. We have more user groups out there and we're, we're starting to see, um, conflicts between the user groups. So, um, I would like to possibly engage a, a gun range designer at some point. Hope maybe in this next year. Um, NRA has a couple here in Utah to come and help us do a little bit of planning with that area. There are, we've had lots of requests to make changes. But with so many different users, um, I think it's not the right idea at this point. I'd like to really bring in a designer. It wasn't the, it was not a well-designed range when it began. So we're kind of trying to deal with it in those terms. And the cl- user conflicts are just basically the issues that we've been having a lot lately. I think COVID has brought out some, some bad behavior because just the way that it is, um, you know, people are stressed and, um, they are coming and, and we're having a lot more people. Um, and so we have had some issues at the parks. Um, and we've had some conflicts between users with, um, our maintenance person. Particularly at the shooting range. And we've had to close, we needed to close the shooting range and, um, I guess it wasn't communicated well enough. So, um, so on that note, we have removed the online reservations, um, aspect for the parks, um, and gone back to the old system. The online reservation was not communicating in a way that the park was either closed for an event or for maintenance. We're looking into other systems right now, um, and hope to have something back, um, by twenty twenty-one. Uh, right now, we're just, um, things are moving along. We're gonna be closing the water at Woods Ranch in the next couple of weeks. Uh, clo- doing, closing that down and reporting that to the Department of Water Quality. Uh, we, that's basically it. Any questions?
Good report.
Thank you.
No, I just, thank you. Marie and I, we, we talk daily, pretty much. And it's, that's a, that's always a fun department to work with. And it's. It's, it's work, but it's.
It's work, but it's.
But it's good.
It's good. Thank you.
Thanks, Maria. Good job. Appreciate it. Sheriff, how are you today?
Thank you, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
Our next slide, under current issues. One of the things I wanted to talk about was, uh, new housing projects. Since I came into office, we've had, uh, four different contractors that have come with us, come to us introducing, uh, new housing plans, uh, projects. And that equates to about two hundred plus houses, uh, since, uh, two thousand nineteen, January of two thousand nineteen. When you look at that, if you figure average household is three to four people, then that raises our county population, six hundred to eight hundred residents. When we hit about a thousand, we need to look at adding another deputy to be able to cover the increased workload that that brings. So we're getting pretty close to that. So I just wanted to, uh, make the commissioner aware of that, that, that is going to be an issue here before too much longer. Our budget is at sixty-one point thirteen percent overall. There's two areas of concern. Our overtime is currently at a hundred and fifty-one percent. That has a lot to do with, uh, some of the major investigations that we've had to do, uh, and also the special events. And then mountain power shortages and training, uh, new employees. The other, uh, area is pre, pre-employment expense. That is at two hundred and seventy-seven point fifty percent above, uh, normal. And, uh, that really is reflective of the difficulty that we're having in finding qualified individuals, uh, when we're filling vacant positions. We have disqualified, uh, just vast numbers, you know, when we, uh, bring in new recruits. It's been very difficult to find people that have been able to make it through our background investigation. And that's where a lot of that cost comes when we're paying, uh, two hundred and fifty dollars for a polygraph test and three hundred and fifty dollars for a psych eval. And then they can't pass those because of integrity issues. And we're gonna wash those out. And that's, that's money that's lost. Our next slide, uh, some of the personnel changes that have taken place. Uh, we currently have Deputy Ryan Turk, completed, uh, online post. And it's currently on FTO. And then we have Deputy Josh Nielsen that's coming over from SU Police Department. Will be joining us next Monday. So we're, uh, glad to have him. We also, uh, are replacing one of our part-time secretaries, Diana Evans. Will be starting next Monday. Next slide. Some more major events. You know, we, uh, have a homicide case that we're currently working. This makes, uh, four homicide cases in Iron County over the course of the year. Three of them have been in Cedar City and then one in the county. The good news is, is that all suspects are in custody. Uh, our suspects are in Barstow waiting extradition hearing. And I was told this morning that it looks like that extradition hearing will take place tomorrow. So we should have, uh, information on when we'll be able to go get them, bring them back here to Iron County. One of the big issues that we've had this year are fires. Uh, we've had sixty-one fires year to date. Thirty-five of those have been on the Fourth of July in itself. You know, we've had a major fire in Hamlin Valley. And then, uh, several, uh, fires due to dry lightning strikes. But, uh, we really ask that people pay attention to the fire restrictions. Right now, we're in a absolutely no burn, uh, time at this, at this time. And so we're issuing a lot of citations right now for people that are, are ignoring those burn, uh, restrictions and, and are starting fires. Uh, so we really, we don't want to issue citations, but it's a, a very dangerous time right now. So we, we ask that people please pay particular attention to that. And then the legislation is coming up. Uh, so again, we're going to be watching a lot of, uh, things that are going to be brought up this year in legislation and, in, uh, relation to a lot of the problems that are going on around the nation right now. So we've been asked that our, our citizens pay particular attention to some of the legislative bills that are being introduced this year and, uh, make their opinions known. So a lot of those things, I don't think are going to be good for law enforcement. And we're going to need all the help that we can get. Uh, so we need to, to pay attention to things that are going to affect us specifically, specifically here in our county. Some of the major events, uh, this year for, uh, reports, year to date, we have one thousand eight hundred and eighty-three police reports. Calls for service year to date has been five thousand six hundred and ninety-five. And citations issued has been nine hundred and ninety-six. Does, uh, anyone have any questions?
I have a comment.
Please.
Why don't we start recruiting to these liberal cities and recruit some of these officers, whether or not appreciated, bring them here?
Well, you know, that's a, a possibility. They'd have to meet Utah's post requirements. And quite frankly, with some of the larger cities, the, that have been held by, uh, Democrat-controlled, uh, mayors and city councils and, uh, chiefs of police, I don't know that I'd want them. You know, you know, we, we have, you know, we know what we're looking for.
Right. And I, I'm.
Officers and deputies. And it's not to say that, that there aren't.
But I think a lot of them are quitting because of that too.
There are. They're, they're leaving in, in droves.
Sad what's going on.
You look at like New York City, New York City can't keep up with the number of officers that are applying for retirement right now. So some of these cities are going to be in very dire straits. So.
I think Austin, was it Austin? They defunded their police department. Put up sign, the law enforcement put up signs, beware, when you enter here, where there's no law enforcement. It's crazy.
So there, there's a lot of crazy things. Uh, one Minneapolis defunded, uh, a good friend of mine's the sheriff for the county in, where Minneapolis is. And he said that when they chose to defund, that he wrote their city council letter and said, you know, our office and several other agencies have been coming to help you through all the riots and whatnot. Says, uh, with your defunding of the police department, we're not going to do that anymore. You know, so there's, there's a lot of issues nationwide that are going on right now. It's a dangerous time, but, but right now our county is in very good shape. We've got wonderful, uh, community support. And, you know, we're, we're very appreciative of that.
And we appreciate you, so.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate it. All right. Does, is that correct? Shalon, corrections?
Thanks.
Morning. All right. So our budget, if you wanna go to the third page there, we're at seventy-one point, seventy-one point nine percent. Just as on the patrol side, our overtime is high, um, is at one fifty-one pers- one hundred and fifty-one percent. Same reasons that he noted. Um, I do believe that it's going to get better. Um, when you gave us our extra deputies last year, I promised it would come down. We've hired eight new deputies this year, which, so we have to get them trained. So, um, I believe that you'll see a big, a big drop in that. Now that we're getting them trained and they're coming off of FTO. Um, I used to post five pages of overtime shifts at the jail. And now I do a page and a half. So I think it's gonna be, I'm hoping it will be significant. Um, maybe not exactly this year. Um, maybe not exactly this year, but next year. Um, same goes with our pre-employment budget. Um, again, our, our office manager, Renan, told me, she's like, "We're in record numbers as far as hiring this year." Um, also, the same is that we've had to disqualify a few that have gone through our back, background process. The way I look at that is it will save us money in the long run, because if we, if we don't get rid of those that, um, have those potential integrity issues, then we'll pay for it in the long run. Um, our culinary, uh, cost, um, our total bookings are about the same as last quarter, I suppose. Um, we are housing a lot of federal inmates right now. There's, believe that there's two, two counties right now that are still accepting their federal inmates. What's happening is there's no movement. So we used to house them, um, after they were found guilty until they were sentenced, and then they moved on to something, to another prison. They're not taking them now, so they're just kinda holding up here in Cedar. And, um, we do have a little bit of concern with that, because after they're, they get to that sentencing point, then they don't have their attorneys anymore, so we're dealing with a lot of post-conviction paperwork with them. Um, but we, we're hoping movement's gonna start in the next week to get some of them out of our facility. Our transportations are extremely low, but if you look down at the bottom, and our total video has gone up significantly. We do a lot of video, um, especially a lot of video for those federal inmates with the courts. Our work crew got back up and running, which has been, been very great. They've been extremely busy. Um, our staffing levels, we still have our three vacancies. Right now, we don't have anybody going through the background process, but we have a roster that closes on the thirtieth of this month, and, and we have a medical vacancy that is open until filled. So if you know anybody that wants to be a medical correctional deputy, we would love for you to send them our way. Um, we have two guys in the academy right now, and we have one that is, has started with us, but we can't get him until the academy, until January. That's their next opening for the academy. We've had quite a bit of long-term leave. We have a couple guys that have been gone on military, and then FMLA, COVID, other administrative issues. Um, we just completed our install in our bondsman's booth, so that we can use that for attorney, um, attorney options. Again, we haven't been turning away any attorneys, um, so we made that available to them, so that they had access to their clients. Again, that's been a huge, we get lots of thank yous for that, because a lot of other facilities are sure making these attorneys jump through a lot of hoops. Uh, we're still over, uh, we're going through our policy review right now. Also, we had our, what used to be called a jail inspection, now we call it consultative services, and we passed with flying colors. He said he loves to come to our facility, because we always do good and our policy is always on point, so...
Awesome.
Any questions?
How've you done with COVID?
Really, really well. Yes, we've lucked out.
I, uh, I rode over to a five-county meeting with Commissioner Alcois from Washington. I guess they had, uh, COVID go through their prison down in, is it purgatory?
Uh-huh.
Ninety-plus inmates, but they, they got it. They got better, nobody went to the hospital, and it's, they...
Yep. It'd be kinda interesting to see. I mean, if you, if you had a circumstance that you ended up having to test your whole facility and all of your officers, you'd, you'd probably get, I mean, they were a third of their population tested positive, so... I mean, but then they all have the right, the same expiration date, right? So you can do it all at once, but we've very, we've lucked out. It's been really good.
That's a good job.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, uh, let's see, victim advocate. Bree?
Good morning, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Um, so we finished out our budget for the last fiscal year. Our grant budget runs from July to June, so this is a overview of that, um, year. I just put in some highlights for y'all. Um, so, we served one thousand two hundred and twenty-three victims over that year. Um, that's pretty significant, I think, because we compare it to the first year of our program, which was shorter. It started in November. Um, but those numbers from November to June were three hundred and seventy-six victims served. Um, so we were able to serve a ton more victims. We added on another advocate, um, but also I think that that's probably due to us, like, you know, knowing our job and having the program more established and whatnot. Um, we were able to provide just over seven thousand dollars in financial support to victims, so this included things like food, clothing, um, rent, hotel rooms, basically, with some parameters, anything financially that a victim, um, would need. I have listed there some of the crimes that we covered. So we had a hundred and seventy-six adult physical assault. We had fifty-nine adult sexual assault cases, sixty-seven, um, child physical abuse or neglect cases, and a hundred and thirty-two child sex cases. Um, so we worked these all in, in conjunction with, um, the CJC. They're awesome partners of ours, and we work pretty well with them. Uh, we had two hundred and twenty-eight domestic violence cases, which we work well with Canyon Creek on. We have some awesome community partners. Uh, three hundred and four property or fraud-related crimes, so this is like a theft or a burglary, um, anything like that. Ninety-one cases of stalking or harassment, twenty-three violations of a court order. Um, we had our one officer-involved shooting last November, and then, as of, you know, 'cause this only covers to the end of June, we had one homicide. That has now changed. Um, and then up there, there's a couple pie charts just showing you the different demographics that we have. Uh, population was female, um, seventy-eight percent was between the ages of eighteen and fifty-nine, um, and then seventy-five percent of our population was, um, Caucasian. So we are working to kind of outreach more to some of our lower demographics. Um, we have a pretty big Hispanic population that we want to be able to work better with, as well as the tribe. Um, we're gonna try and get in, working with them and having more of a presence, um, with the Paiute tribe. Um, so I think those numbers are all great, but the big thing is the impact that we have on our victims. So I had asked Wendy and Jayden, our two advocates, to send me just a couple of cases or, um, snapshots of things that they've done, that they were proud of. Um, so the one bubble says, "I was literally alone in this thing until you called me today." So that was Jayden had called a victim who had been involved in domestic violence, um, and helped them. Um, the other is one of Wendy's clients who said, "Your job is very much needed in our community, and you're doing exact, doing it exactly how it should be done." Wendy works all of our child cases, um, for the city, so anything involving a child, and this was a family that had had a lot of, um, a lot of abuse go on, and they were a little bit blind to it and to the impact that it had. So she's been able to work with them more, um, and helped provide some long-term supports. Um, that other top comment, she desperately needed someone to talk to, and most importantly, she needed to feel like she was being heard. That's that same victim from Jayden. He had called her, and she had basically said that her family had given up on her and didn't believe her, and she was alone. And so he was able to work with her and help her to, um, not only not feel alone, but feel heard and feel like her, her story was valid, and, um, get her some help that she needed. We were able to provide some financial assistance to her, um, which was super, super helpful. And then that bottom one, uh, though they've been, though they have an uphill battle in the aftermath of sexual abuse, they know they're not alone because of the resources and people behind them, so that's Wendy's comment. Um, she's really awesome at working with our community partners and helping to make sure that people have like a safety net, um, of people behind them. So, overall, I think our last year was super awesome. We de-obligated quite a bit of money on our grant, mostly because of training, um, because a lot of our trainings happened in the spring, and because of COVID, a lot of them got canceled. Um, so we had a lot of money that we sent back to VOKA, um, and had to explain that. They, I sent a super, super rough budget draft to Lieutenant Slosser, so that he could do his budget, because VOKA will be, um, decreasing the amount that they're able to fund, um, just a little bit. So there may be some things that will request, uh, be picked up by the county, um, or we'll have to find other, other sources for them. Uh, mostly, it would just be like wage increases and vehicles. Our vehicles are struggling. Our Ford Explorer is making some weird noises and some different things, so, um, hopefully we'll be able to work that in, but I'll be writing for a new budget, which we'll cover the next two years, um, in the spring. So, do you have any questions for me?
Oh, again, thank you. I use your services quite frequently, and I really like working with you guys. It's, there, it's, it's been a huge difference in past experience with law enforcement to now, is it's great to be able to call you guys. Our victims are in way better hands with you guys than with us cops, so...
Yeah, I wish, I wish that there was a way that we could accurately show the impact that we have, because I can give you all the numbers of all the things that we're doing and all the people that we're helping, but really, until you sit down with a victim and you hear how their life has changed because of this traumatic event, and how, you know, we're never gonna be able to get it back to where it was before something traumatic happened, but to help them to be able to have something afterwards and build that up is, it's huge, but...
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Bree. Appreciate your report.
Thank you.
Let's, uh, go to commission reports. Commissioner Blake, you have any?
Um, the fair is over.
It was wonderful.
And we, and we all survived it. Um, I, I don't know, I don't know exactly what our numbers are, but, um, I had the opportunity, I said early on, I said, "Hey, if I can do anything to help, let me know." And I found myself working in ticket booths at the rodeo and crash-up derby and, and things like that, and it was, uh, on your feet in a ticket booth for six hours a night is, the, those, I just wanna thank our volunteers. Those guys worked their butts off. And without, uh, without the volunteers, there is no way we could put the fair on. And it was, it was really cool to get to know a lot of those people better and to, to be involved in that. But one thing that we did notice, coming through the ticket booths, uh, we had a lot of people from, from Vegas and California that said, "Hey, you're the only game in town," so we drove here to go to the rodeo. Um, and they, they were unable to find hotels. A, a bunch of different people said, "Hey, do you have any secret hotels that you know about? Because we just thought we'd come up here and find a room, and this place is booked out. We're, we're, we're not able to find a room." So, it was really good, and, and through all of that, uh, on those different events, we didn't, we, we may have had a couple of complaints here and there, but they were really minor. Um, it was interesting, the rodeo on Saturday night, there were a few more skirmishes at the rodeo than there were at the crash-up derby. The, it was just an interesting dynamic, but it was, the, the sheriff's office was there in force and, uh, with their search and rescue, and, uh, nothing got out of hand. It, it just worked out really well. So across the board, i- it was a lot of fun being a little bit more hands-on with the fair than in years past. Uh, and we've really gotta figure out what we're gonna do when Joyce decides to leave, 'cause we're hosed. That lady's a, lady's a rock star, so, we're, that's gonna be a, that's gonna be a tough shoes to fill. So that was, that's been my focus mostly since, uh, this is over. We've been working with, uh, tourism a lot. We've got some updated stuff. I met with Curtis at Council on Aging the other day and talked about some things we'll talk about later, but, uh, yeah, just, just pressing on.
Last night, if we could go to the carnival, so, he doesn't realize it's over. We had to tell him it's next year, so, it was fun. We, we had a wonderful time at the fair, and, uh, all of the events were great. And what was neat is rodeo, what they say, they canceled seventy percent of the PRCA rodeos across the country, so we had all this top talent here. It was, it was really amazing.
Yes.
It was indeed, yeah. PRCA rodeo is, brings in the people. I think we, uh, have always had more at the, more crowd at the demo derby than the Saturday night rodeo, but this year, the rodeo exceeded the demo derby. It's becoming more and more popular. And the two o'clock rodeo on Monday afternoon was hard for people to get used to, but now a lot more are coming there, and it was, it was pretty much not maxed and, maxed out like Saturday, but there was a lot of people there, so, very good. We've had talks, uh, lately, continuing talks with the Forest Service about, uh, ATV trail from Bryanhead to the red desert Sidney Valley area, so we'd actually be able to connect, clear with Duck Creek. Uh, the, uh, Cedar City, or I mean, not Cedar City, Bryanhead is on board with this. We had a meeting with them the other day. Commissioner Cousins and I were there, and, uh, there's, there's always concerns, you know, they said, "We don't wanna become Duck Creek." But, um, anyway, but I think people just kinda circle around Bryanhead Town, and they don't know, they need a place to get away and, and, uh, you know, and do a loop, and so hopefully that's gonna happen. And then also, we've been talking with folks about, uh, putting the ice rink at, uh, this winter that had to be moved, um, up at Woods Ranch. So we're in, that's just in its first talks, but that may happen, so we'll have a place for those people to go. We've had such an interest in that, that we need to keep that going, so, that's all I have.
One of the biggest hurdles with the ice rink, uh, is with water, because Maria mentioned they're shutting off the water up there, so, um, there's some talks. I've made it, I put in a call to, um, Paul Bitman's the president of the Southwest Field Irrigation Company, and, um, and so I've gotta finalize that with him, but they'd like to use some water out of that kid's pond this winter to, to feed that ice rink. And so, we already, we already did a change application. Um, we might have to modify that a little bit with the water division, water rights. So I'd like to get that done today, uh, to see if they can have some water to get over that hurdle, so they don't have to haul it. It's, it's, that's gonna be a, a big hurdle. This, Commissioner Adams, this was an email, a text message I got from Jamie Cox Harline. She's one that organized the cleanup on Highway Fifty-Six. We had, uh, close to two hundred people, and we cleaned from wheeling machinery out to the Y. It was a great success, but she's really passionate about keeping things clean, and she just said, "Can you present the idea of Iron County Sparkle every year, with dumpsters dropped in each town for a week during the last Monday of March and August, with organized cleanups, eventually litter recycle awareness in schools?" So, anyway, she's asking, she's passionate about organizing cleanups, and, and that's just something, if you, I don't know, I'm not sure you're there. And then, uh, Dan mentioned the Senior Center. We are planning to add on to that. I hired Ron Larson. Uh, he's a, he's a, a great, a great friend and somebody that's always helped us out. He, he took a Google Earth, uh, image of that property and, uh, and, and did some rough plans that we, we're, we're doing a design build. We did a, a pre-bid meeting on Friday. We had six general contractors show up, which was, was, was great. All great builders and, um, and showed interest in that project. And, uh, a couple things with the property that's unique, um, right, the, so that building was built, the original building was built in nineteen eighty-eight, and, uh, and then it was added on in two thousand and five. Robert Mercer was architect. We did find Curtis Crawford was digging in a closet over here and found the old plans, which was handy. We scanned those, so we can send those to interested builders, so they can, it really will help them to see what's existing. I, I attended a city council meeting some time ago. The Senior Center sits on a Cedar City property. There's no agreement between Iron County and Cedar City that we could find, and so Cedar City would like, there was some discussion about having Cedar City deed that property to us. It's, it's really the same. We're serving our same people. It really doesn't matter, but, uh, we decided, or, or, uh, the city manager, Mr. Bitman, decided it would, it would be more convenient probably just to do a lease agreement. So, I think John, didn't you help, uh, Lester and Terry with the property description to get to Cedar City? So they'll write up a, an agreement that we can sign, and, and they'll, they'll le, continue to lease that property to us. We are gonna maybe, uh, move the, do a lot line adjustment back, so we can add some parking back between the playground equipment. This is just on Two Hundred South by Canyon Park, uh, so there's some playground equipment, and then we might try to add on to a parking area between the playground and, and the existing parking lot, so that's moving forward. I can't think of a better way to spend our COVID money than on our Senior Center, because those, those seniors are packed in there, they're tight, and this'll, it'll also help them to move around a little better, give them an elevator, some nice big spaces to, to move into. They're, they're just really bulging at the seams, so that's, I, I'm really excited about that. We also, in our five-county meetings, uh, we will be getting a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of CARES Act money through the S, SBDG, um, uh, grant, um, through the CARES Act, and that's money that can be spent. We've talked about maybe buying some new Meals on Wheels vehicles, um, freezers, uh, generators to, in case power goes out to preserve our food in the... in case power goes out to preserve our food in the, I know Garfield County had a power outage and they lost a lot of food in their, in their senior center where they, you know, for their uh, food pantry and those things. So that's, those are some things we've got to meet and discuss how we're going to spend that money. I received word from Marvin Dodge, who is the CFO of, of SGU. They are going to sign an agreement with Sitla on a piece of ground around two thousand flushes. They're going to put seven uh, landing pads out there for their helicopter program so that they can get, pull those aircraft away from the cities and airports to relieve pressure and noise. And, and I think that's going to be a real win-win for SGU and, and our local communities and, and freeing up the, the, the noise and the, and the congestion at the airports. We did submit as a county commission, another request to go green in Iron County. And we did receive a letter back on that. Um, the new, the new director, the new state health director, if I can find the letter here, is Richard Saunders. And um, the letter just, he, he wrote us back and he said, thank you for your leadership in, in, and this was a letter to Washington, this was a letter to Dr. Blodgett, our, our local health director, five county health director, and this was uh, entitled, or addressed to him. And but he, but he said, thank you for your leadership in uh, guiding Washington, Iron and King Counties efforts. This is so small. I'm sorry, I can barely read it. To combat the COVID nineteen pandemic and for your support of Governor Herbert's Utah Leads Plan Together. Utah Department of Health has reviewed your request for exemption per newly adopted Utah COA blah, 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 requesting Washington Iron Counties to enter the green phase. After careful um, review and consultation with the governor's office, we would like to delay response to this request for two weeks. There is concern about possible viral spread resulting from Labor Day gatherings and the commencement, commencement of higher education and in-person classes. And then he said, I look forward to reviewing the public health data of these two counties and discussing this with you further into the further date. So so we, we continue to, we're, I think we're close to uh, day one hundred and fifty of a fifteen day effort to flatten the curve. And um, I, I feel bad for our restaurants mostly because as Maria said, many of them are at fifty percent capacity or less. It's very difficult for them to, to make a profit and, and for their waitresses and waiters to receive enough tips to make a living. And so I, I continue to, um, I'm continuing to be hopeful that uh, the governor will see fit. We, our numbers are down. We had two cases yesterday. Our seven day rolling average has been around seven, yesterday our seven day rolling average was two. So our, our numbers are going way down. Hospitalizations are near zero. And um, what they're really looking for, they said this last time was they want us to be one hundred, less than one hundred active cases in a three week period per one hundred thousand people. So we're, we're a population of fifty-four thousand or fifty-five thousand. Um, we need to be under fifty. And so as, and I counted the last twenty-one days and we were at ninety-four. So I don't know that uh, it's, it's a little bit discouraging honestly. Um, but um, we'll continue to be hopeful and and open things up at some point. Um, so that's, that's all the report I have. So we'll go ahead and, and if there's nothing else that other commissioners have, we'll go ahead and take probably a ten minute break. We're running a little bit late today, but take a ten minute break and resume this meeting at ten twenty-five. Marilyn?
I just had a question. Um, on, on the last cleanup, did you ever hear of a tonnage that we did on?
I think it was about two point eight tons, I believe Bruce reported of trash.
And then the other thing is I believe there's another cleanup that Phil Bowles doing tonight.
Oh, is it?
I believe it's today in, at Cross Hollow, you meet.
Okay. So it's Jamie Harline Cox. If you go to her Facebook page, she's been, she's very passionate and vocal and I, that's awesome that she's doing that and trying to keep things clean and, and um, that highway project was, was so needed. I mean, it's, it gets, and, and a lot of people think people throw trash, it's not so much people throwing trash out the window. It's trucks going out to the landfill and blowing off and it, that fence catches, catches a lot of that trash blowing from the south. So it's just something that has to be done every few years. So, but we, we really appreciate our landfill director, uh, Bruce Anderson and, and Alma for his support in, in these projects and helping us keep our communities clean. So thanks for bringing that up. We'll resume in at ten.
Welcome back to our Iron County Commission meeting this Monday, the fourteenth day of September. It's ten thirty. And we'll go to agenda item number one, public comments. This is a three-minute time limit per speaker for public comment participants. It should not repeat others' comments, and it's only for items not on the agenda. No items related to commission's role as an appeal board. Comments should be directed to the commission. No attacks on other people's characters.
I'd just like to say a few words about the Southwest Junior Livestock.
Your name?
We talked about, no, Maryland Wood, Commissioner-elect. So, we talked about it a little bit before, but I just wanted to give a shout-out to all the businesspeople that came out in droves with their money and bought the kids' livestock, which is a great program for those kids. They learn responsibility, they learn, you know, caring for the animals. And, and that money usually goes for college funds, and so that's a great thing. There's a little story that happened for Chad Reed. They had a scholarship fund, and they started bidding on a pig. They, they had a pig, a hog that was donated for that. And the hog was sold over and over again. They raised forty-two thousand dollars for that scholarship fund, which was pretty spectacular. And, and the businesspeople came out and, and did that. Another little story that I thought was kind of fun is Dean Terry. I don't know whether you know him. He's from Saint George Enterprise area, businessman. And in nineteen forty-seven, I believe, he had the, he came to that show and had the, uh, the hog that won, that won, uh...
Grand Champ.
Grand Champion, all those years before. He's eighty-eight years old, and he came to the show and bought the hog. He said, "Before I die, I want to buy the Grand Champion hog." And he paid over three thousand dollars for it. So, that was kind of a fun little story, too. But anyway, a shout-out to all those people that came and supported that show.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move to agenda, agenda item number two. And this is the discussion on possible approval of a local consent permit requested by Canyon Creek Crisis Services for their annual fundraising gala to be held on October ninth at the Iron Springs Resort.
Do you want me just to talk about, do you want us to mention it?
Go for it.
This is the annual Canyon Cry, Canyon Creek Crisis Services Gala. It's a fundraising gala. The request is just to be able to serve wine at that event. I believe you got the paperwork and such. So, this, this would be kind of one of those standard, we approve the, for the DABC guidelines to be able to serve wine at the event.
Any discussion?
I would move for approval for the local consent permit requested by Canyon Creek Crisis Services for their annual fundraising gala that is to be held October ninth at the Iron Springs Resort.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the local consent permit as explained. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Agenda item number three, discussion on possible approval of a local consent permit request, requested by Iron Springs Adventure Resort for an Oktoberfest event to be held on October ninth at the Iron Springs Resort.
So, this is a similar event, same venue. Would either of you like to come speak to that?
Brian?
Yeah, I wanted to clarify, that's not the right date. It's the sixteenth and seventeenth of October.
Okay, okay. You want to come up and talk about it, Brian?
Sure. Yeah, it's just, uh...
Just state your name and...
My name's Brian Nichols, here to represent Iron Springs. And, and, yeah, it's a, it's a two-day event slash festival. We hope it'll be a real asset to the community, is outdoors. And we're just here to get the local consent for the DABC as needed to, to vend, you know, beer and wine at this event in a beer garden setting, so...
Didn't you tell me this might become an annual?
We hope to.
Annual?
Yeah, we hope to make it a, and where other people have canceled these throughout the state, we'll hope this is an opportunity for us in Iron County to, to benefit from another event. So, that's kind of it. But it's not just that. It'll be like family activities and food trucks and German food and all that, you know, music, live performances, most typically outside, so...
Very good. Any questions for Brian?
I would move approval of the local consent permit for Iron Springs Adventure Resort for an Oktoberfest event to be held on October sixteen and seventeen at the Iron Springs Resort.
Second.
It's been, been moved and seconded to approve this, another local consent permit on the sixteenth and seventeenth for the Oktoberfest celebration. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Item number four, request by owners of APN D-346 to petition the Iron County Commission to vacate the portion of the road, South Black Mountain slash Erie Creek Road that runs through said parcel.
Thanks.
Good morning. I'm Heather Webster-Ramer. I'm here on behalf of the family Webster, the Webster family that owns that parcel. There was a gate on this road that didn't have, when we first put the gate up, there was no tri, no trespassing sign. It was not locked. But the county quit maintaining it, so we put a lock on it. My father went to the, to the other property owners past that point, and they agreed to lock the gate. The gate was locked, and then because of the gate, the, in two thousand and twelve, that was taken off the maintenance map. And then we were never approached by the county until just recently about the road being rough and about the county having access to this partial of road. It is a dead-end road. There is no access. There's no turnaround. It is an afterthought anyway. When my dad worked for the county, his, his boss said, "If you got a minute, go down there, get, get done what you gotta do." So, it's not a place where they can do a lot of good because it's a short piece, comes to property, private property. There are some property owners that that is their only access to their property, to their cabins, to check their livestock. It is actually a livestock trail. All the livestock people that need the combination have the combination. And if they, if they call and check, they're going through there to see if it's changed. So, they call, they call one of the property owners, or they call my little brother who is in the livestock business to see if the combination has changed. Everybody that needs the combination has the combination. For, for, how many years? Eight years. It hasn't been maintained. Mel Clark did a lot of maintenance on it last year. It is the best it's ever been. That's probably because we've kept other people out of it, the public out of it. Just the people that need to use it, use it. This, if you vacate this road, it's going to save you time, it's going to save you money. And as of right now, it's not going to change anything because you haven't been, it's not, hasn't been done for eight years. So, nothing's going to change. So, just so you know that if you don't grant, grant us this today, we will petition again. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I speak to this, Mr. Chairman? I had a meeting with these folks and, and the other party that, that wants it open. And so, and I appreciate, you know, everything that's been said. And there's a lot of emotion, though, from both sides, and, which is unfortunate, but these things happen, and...
I forgot to tell you, I have ninety-two signatures of property owners, families, friends, that want it locked. They want the gate locked. It's saving their property, their safety, yes. The other party involved is just stirring trouble. They have a lawsuit against a family, they have a lawsuit against us on another road. This is just to take a dig at us. But for eight years, it hasn't been maintained. It's best it's ever been. The only reason they complained is because they're causing trouble. And if you want more questions, you can ask questions. I have some other members here that agree with, that want it vacated. And in that breath, if you don't vacate it, then we're going to push to have it go from all the way through to through past the compliance pot, property, which means that'll add four more miles to your roads that cannot be maintained. So...
Was there a hand down here before I continue to comment? Okay. Anyway, very contentious, and it hasn't been fun being in the middle of this a little bit. But as we, it's in a lawsuit right now. I don't feel like we can take any action.
The lawsuit really does not pertain to this. They are using, it, they are using it, but it has nothing to do with their lawsuit.
Well, I don't know if it's true or not, but one of the people from the other side told me that their attorney insisted that it be part of the lawsuit.
Well, far as we, as you know...
So...
Their attorney has not contacted ours. How can they sort of have these laws through the lawsuit?
Well, I'm not an attorney, so anyway, but the dispute over it, apparently, that, that's what a gentleman from the other party told me that. Anyway, so I don't feel like we can move forward on taking action on this at this time because there's, you know, there's just too many things, there's too many variables out there. Appreciate all these petitions, and I would like Mike Edwards, our Deputy County Attorney, to just tell you what the process is, because I know when you ask in the meeting, you know, I just said, "Well, you just petitioned the commission," but I, I haven't read the whole process. And so, he can tell you, there's a, there's a larger process than what's happened so far.
So, I would just refer you to, it's in the Utah Code seventeen twenty-seven A six oh nine point five. It's petition to vacate a public street. It indicates what the petition must include, which, among other things, is the name and address of each owner of record of land that is adjacent to the public street or county utility easement between the two nearest public street intersections or accessed exclusively by or within three hundred feet of the public street or county utility easement, proof of written notice to utilities. That's probably not the case with this mountain road. And the signature of each owner under subsection two A who consents to the vacation. So, I think you're, we would need to have a written petition that would include some of this information in order for the county commission to approve the petition to vacate the road. They would have to determine whether good cause exists to vacate the road and whether or not the public interest or any person will be materially injured by the proposed vacation. So, those are the things that the county commission would consider after receiving a petition that, that met those, those requirements.
Mike, what was the, what was the code again?
Seventeen twenty-seven A six oh nine point five. And I'm looking under subsections two and three. You know, there's more subsections than that, but those are the, the two subsections that I read.
Did you folks get that?
No, say that again, please.
Seventeen twenty-seven A six oh nine point five. And that's entitled petition to vacate a public street.
Just to be clear on that, that is just the landowners that publicly own land on that locked area?
Adjacent to the road, is that what it says?
It says adjacent to it and accessed exclusively by or within three hundred feet of the road.
Any other discussion? Any further discussion on this?
Oh, I, I think, I would encourage you to look, look close at that section, look close at the, at that code, without giving any legal advice. Look closely at that and, and make sure that the petition is in line with Utah statute so that it's something that we can consider.
Hey, now, that says public road. It's a lot of public roads.
Well, we, in the letter that we sent to you folks, we believe it is a public road because we have maintained it in the past. And, and we, and we admit that we didn't maintain it for some time.
There's lots of county roads that aren't maintained.
But we didn't relinquish, you know, we didn't relinquish it as a public road. We just stopped maintaining it.
It's taking off the maintenance map.
Because they put a lock on it.
And it's not a deeded road to the county.
Thank you.
Thank you. Entertained a motion?
Hope I get this right. I, I move that we deny this petition at this time because of lack of, uh, all the information that's, that's requested in state code seventeen dash two seven A six oh nine point five.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded as described. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Item number five, request to remove penalties and interest from parcels APN B-1166 and APN B-1166-5 due to a segregation of parcels and subsequent tax assessments not reaching the owner. Nicole.
How are you guys?
Yes, how are you?
Good. We just kind of have a strange situation. A parcel owned by Levitt Land, they had a, they broke it into three parcels in April of two thousand and nineteen. So, anytime it's after the January one, it creates a little bit of difficulty, of course, because it's going to be assessed as it stood on January first, which that was as one big parcel under the name of Levitt Land. So, they broke it into three parcels in April, and the notice would have gone to them because, of course, the parent number was under Levitt Land. But then in August, there was a little piece left over. It's actually a road. So, they did a road dedication in that August and gave Cedar City point two oh six of the thirteen or fourteen acres. So, they just got this little teeny bit of the road dedication. But because it was the, just that little amount left over that was put in the name of Cedar City Corp. So, when we sent out tax notices, of course, that parent number still had the full tax amount, which was quite sizable. It's around twenty-seven thousand dollars. But due to all of the changes, it went to Cedar City Corp., who, they didn't contact our office. They contacted the recorder's office and said, "Hey, why are we getting this notice?" And they were told to forward it to Levitt Land, which, that didn't happen until after taxes were delinquent. So, Levitt Land did call us. They did pay the tax amount, but they did not feel that they should have to pay the penalty due to everything happening, they not getting the notice, and Cedar City not getting the notice to them in time. So, we wish they would have just contacted us directly. We would have been happy to get a notice to them with the needed information, but that just did not happen. So, now we're needing to move that penalty, unless you're willing to remove or forgive that. But we'll have to move it on to the three new parcels. So, it's a little bit of a mess. three new parcels. Um, so it's a little bit of a mess. Um, but I wanted you to be aware one way or the other. If, if you don't forgive it, that's fine. Um, you will probably hear from Levitt Land. So I just want you to be aware of that, um, before we go ahead and move that. We always do our splits during the summer. So any property that's being deleted or if there's a delinquent amount on a deleted number, we move those on to the new numbers. So that's what we've been doing and have encountered this problem that still lingers. So, so we're just here to see if you're willing to remove it. And if not, then if, um, we have your approval to move it on to those three parcels.
So, well, this is, is it fixed now? So it won't happen again? Or notice goes to the right place?
Yes. And in going forward, of course, Cedar City will not be taxed because they're tax exempt and they just have that little, um, road amount. And then Levitt Land, uh, will receive three tax notices. So everything's fine going forward. It's just segregations are always difficult and Carrie and I have been talking about it this morning. Of course, we had several amendments last year with, uh, Platts. And it just, it, it's really difficult. We do have to have a, a date of cutoff, of course, for the assessor to go out and assess. Carrie's world they're living in today and we're kind of living in how the property stood in the past. And so it gets, it gets really complicated. Um, we try to do our best to, um, to work with title companies, to work with the owners, to make it as easy as we can. But when they have several things happen within a year, changes of ownership within a year, like especially unamended parcels, it just gets, it gets a little more complicated. We wish we could figure out a better way, but like I say, we do try our hardest to work with owners to make it as easy as we possibly can, but...
The penalty was, was it two hundred and something dollars? What was it?
Yes, that was the original amount that they didn't pay. Then of course, on December thirty-first, um, additional penalty went on and now interest has also gone on since that time. So.
Could I comment, Mr. Chairman? Um, this is a little bit of a slippery slope.
I know.
Because when, you know, this is a large company and then when we have individual homeowners come in and, excuse me, I'm not really emotional today. My voice is just not, it's just cracking. Anyway, um, and they say, well, I didn't get a notice or whatever. Well, by law, that it's their burden to pay their taxes even if they don't get a notice. Uh, and obviously we do everything in our power to make sure that they do get a notice. Uh, so I have a struggle treating, you know, this situation any different than just a single family situation. Um, unless you feel like, you know, we were negligent. I think if we were negligent in some way, then, you know, then maybe that would be warranted. But it seems to me like it's just a situation of it's difficult to get everything in place, but they, but, but it is their bur, it is every taxpayer's burden to know, you know, to find out what their tax is and to pay it. So, so that's my comment.
Do you, do you feel like we were negligent in any way in the county or?
Uh, you know, like I say, it, where it had so many changes happened to it within, within two thousand and nineteen, um, it, it just makes it a little muddy. But of course, we followed, um, in talking with Carrie, she followed her office procedures of how they handle it. Um, we weren't really, our office wasn't really made aware of it until we sent out delinquent notices and Cedar City received the delinquent notice for the portion that was unpaid, which was the penalty. And that was the first time we were really aware that there was a bit of a problem. Um, and that Cedar City had not given that information on time. So again, Levitt Land probably should have reached out when they did not receive a notice. But, um, I know they at least did not reach out to our office. So, but, um, I just wanted you to be aware regardless of which way, um, you vote, just you, you may hear from, from them, just so that you understand the situation. Because we will be, you know, needing to move that on to the three new parcels if you, if you don't have that removed. So.
I, these are always hard because like Alma said, Commissioner, um, Adam said that you're creating a, you know, this is a precedent you're setting and makes it really difficult.
We, uh, we call that argument the wise and prudent man argument. A wise and prudent man knows that he owes taxes and that there is, now, when you have someone like, you know, someone who owns quite a few pieces of property, they can get lost in the shuffle. But yeah, that, that's, we refer to that as often as the wise and prudent man argument.
And it's kind of a new area for us too, because when we're doing these splits and, um, parcels that have been deleted, we're typically moving tax. So we're moving an exact amount of tax to the, you know, another parcel, exact amount. So just, we've never really had to move penalty before. So we just felt we would rather have your approval on, on how we handle it one way or the other.
Did you decide on any process changes to, to try and prevent this kind of a thing in the future?
You know, I don't know. We've been, we have, we've been beating it up, you know, for months. Um, we had, I am working with Cal and security title. We had a plat that was amended. Um, and you know, plat amend wouldn't have been a big deal because they get a new number. But if they get a new number and then they sell it, well, the original owner is going to get the new tax notice, not the new owner.
The lien date is January one.
Right. And, and we had, we had a lot of problems this year. Just there's a lot of building going on. There's a lot of subdividing going on. There's a lot of amending going on right now. And so it seems like this year we've really been beat up a little bit and we've, um, we've met with recorder's office two or three times. I went down and met with Cal. I don't know. I, we, we, like I say, we try to do our best, but sometimes when there's just several things that happened to a property within the year, um, it just gets more and more complicated. Um, and Carrie lives in today and Cindy and I, we live a little bit in the past because we're building everything up to January first and Carrie goes on in real time. So, so I, I feel like we, we try to do the best we can. Um, we've tried doing it a couple of different ways, actually. And the way they're doing it now, to me, I feel is about the best way we can handle it. I don't know if you want...
So we actually did change our policy slightly this year because of some of these things. Um, so we delete all numbers now. We don't keep mother numbers. They get deleted. So that would have fixed this problem, but it can cause problems on the other end, like with the amended Platts. So there's not a perfect solution because of how the system works. Um...
You change policy and it helps and fixes one thing, but then...
There's no way for us to make it perfect for everybody. Um, my opinion is people should be responsible for their property. It's their property. They own it. They should take ownership in it. Um, I don't think we did anything wrong, but we have changed our policy slightly to help prevent some of this.
How often has this exact scenario happened in the past?
Um...
Was sent to the wrong, like?
Oh, tax notices get sent to the wrong place quite often.
Do they?
Um, where this is a municipality, that probably doesn't happen really a lot, obviously. Um, I mean, this is a, it was a big piece of property. It has a fourplex or a sixplex. I mean, I would think they would have noticed that that, that that was missing.
And sometimes, you know, our tax exempt people, they'll go, well, we don't, we shouldn't be getting a tax bill. We shouldn't, we don't pay taxes. And they set it aside and sometimes wait to contact me till the last minute or if not at all, um, to try to get things worked out.
So Paul, to answer your question, this was a case where there was some tax exempt and some not tax exempt, and then there was a configuration change. And that's, that's what kind of caused, because some of it had been exempt before and then some of it wasn't. And then it changed what was, what wasn't. And then the, some of that tax bill ended up going to the municipality, which had been exempt and isn't used to paying tax until they figured out to communicate that to the Levitts.
Right. But there are lots of reasons people don't get tax notices. This is one of them. You know, you don't update your address. The title company gives us the wrong address. Lots of reasons. So I'm not sure if I didn't get my tax notice is a good reason to not pay your taxes, but that's up to you.
This is the day that we are glad we are not commissioners, that we get to leave this problem up to you to be solved. So.
We ask for these jobs. So hey, we're in the hot seat all the time.
Is there any other questions or comments?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Yeah.
I move that, uh, we deny the request to remove penalties and interest from parcels APN B one one six six and APN B dash one one six six dash five, um, due to the fact that , uh, property owners have the burden of paying their taxes, whether or not they receive the notice timely.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second and as described. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number six, determination by commission of what is substantially dedicated employee to the COVID nineteen response for documentation purposes of CARES Act and state CFR, CRF funding.
Okay. So this is just, uh, really thinking of a diplomatic way to say CYA. Um, so we have the CARES money. Uh, they, they made it clear that we could reimburse, um, for the, um, salaries and salaries and wages benefits for personnel, medical and law enforcement whose duties have significantly shifted due to the pandemic. We do have some of our, some money in our budget set aside for this purpose. Um, we have got conflicting information as we've been, we've been, we've been trying to react as they've come out with guidelines. Every new thing of guidelines changes slightly. Um, we thought we were all good. We had our budget set based on the federal guidelines that we got from the, the Department of Treasury. Um, here a week or two ago, the state came out and said, I know you're all planning on doing this, but you need to document in every case exactly what was done by, by your frontline law enforcement, medical towards COVID nineteen. In other words, you can't just designate. And, um, everybody was like, what are you talking about? You're changing the rules on us mid-game and, uh, was kind of frustrated and there's a lot of confusion. It just happened to be by chance that later that day, the Department of Treasury came out with new guidelines, which kind of contradicted what the state had just told us. So then the state was backpedaling a little bit, um, and saying, well, um, we don't want to, um, be in conflict with the federal guidelines. Um, so basically they said that the federal guideline said that the state, the, the, um, CEO equivalent should designate and specify as to how we are going to track this and how we're going to say whose duties have shifted and whose have not. So my proposal was that we would simply by designation of this body, which is the, uh, which is the chief executive, declare that our frontline law enforcement is their, their duties have significantly changed. And that is the litmus test that we will use as we document it in the auditor's office. So if you remember, I came to you when we were doing our budget adjustment and I calculated, estimated that by, through the end of November, we would have around one point four something million dollars. That was based on, we literally took our deputies that see time out on the road. Um, most all of your deputy one, two, three corporals, sergeants that are not administrative. We left off that, our administrative sergeant, we left off our office personnel, um, pretty much just left off the, uh, the people who are really inside the office. And we said anybody who's out on the road, their duties have shifted. And that's who we calculated that one point four million dollars based on their salaries, um, during that time. We did not count overtime.
What about our corrections deputies? Their role has changed in having to take temp.
Sheriff, could you come up and speak at the microphone? Sorry.
So I'll, I'll, well, I'll let him say.
I guess my, my question would be about the corrections deputies because it's with the COVID, now it's become very incumbent upon them to increase their, uh, medical process of checking everyone that's coming into the jail, including themselves, before they come in to ensure that we don't have a COVID issue. And, you know, Shalan talked earlier about how lucky she's been in the jail. Has nothing to do with luck. It has to do with good procedures that they established early on. And, uh, we did have one case of COVID that came into the jail and they caught it as soon as they came into booking and were able to isolate it there into the booking area. So it never got into the general population. And, uh, you know, I, I think that that's significant is that it, that has changed all the de, the deputies in the jail side of things of, of what their in process and, and what they do throughout their day. So.
And so to answer that, the, the reason, and I agree with the sheriff, um, in our line of thinking that, that would definitely, they have, their duties have, have had to shift. Um, the reason why we didn't include the, the corrections officers when we were doing that calculation was, um, it harkens back to when I was on a call with the secretary assistant to Department of Treasury and, and he was talking about it. In that call, he was like, basically they are going to categorically look at law enforcement or, I mean, ambulance, stuff like that. And, and they're going to say, based on their, their job, we are not going to have to prove it. They're just going to, this, this is the federal government. He says, we are going to just basically give them an exclusion and just assume that their duties have shifted. Everybody else, you're going to have to, um, you're going to have to prove it. And, um, somebody asked him, does that include corrections? And he says, no, corrections are a different beast. He said, they're not going to be included. So this was just, just right off of, right off the guy's, um, um, right off the top of his head. He said, he says corrections are different. And I don't know if that has to do with funding sources or what, but he just dismissed that right out of the gate. And so we didn't include it in our calculations. Um, I think that if we were trying to justify it so that we could maximize our ability to use these funds for that purpose, I think that we would and should really, um, talk about corrections. The fact that we, we're already leaving money on the table, all that does is add more money that we would then leave on the table. So I don't know if that's, is that something we, we, we need to fight that battle. Um, you know, of the one point four million, we actually only budgeted for five hundred thousand to transfer. So, um, if we were meeting, we needed to be able to utilize it for that, then I think we would want to dig in and get further clarification on corrections and all that. It's just, if we're going to spend a penny on that, um, meaning we reimburse ourselves for that, I think that we need to have a declaration of why we're doing it. And in a lot of these things, they give us the guidance and then they always come back to it is the local government's decision on how they're going to basic, basically make that judgment call. So what I'm actually, actually asking you to do is make the judgment call and say, um, rather than tracking on a time card basis to have Ken's deputies say, okay, I spent an hour doing X that had to do with COVID nineteen. And rather than getting into that granular detail, which would frankly be a burden and a nightmare, I would like you to categorically say, anybody who is, um, out on the road doing active patrol, we're going to assume their duties have shifted. And that is our, that's our litmus test. And then we'll just count their salaries.
And to be clear, you're talking just in terms of the application of the COVID money, right? I mean...
Yeah. This doesn't actually change.
Not to belittle anything in corrections.
No, this is a, this is a red tape thing is what, is all we're doing here, but...
I'll entertain one.
Um, should I get this right? Uh, would move...
I would move to approve the definition of a substantially dedicated employee to the COVID-19 response as that of a frontline law enforcement officer in the Iron County Sheriff's Office who daily patrols the, the streets and has interaction with the public in Iron County.
I would also include George Coulson's full salary because he's substantially dedicated to it.
And add to my motion, the position of the emergency manager for Iron County, George Coulson, for the same reasons of his daily interaction directly required to deal with the COVID-19 situation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded as described to, to define what the substantially dedicated employee to the COVID-19 response is. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Dan. Discussion and, number seven, discussion and approval of a bid for countywide GIS parcel fabric conversion and remapping project.
All right. And so basically what we're doing is my office is going to be switching from our current mapping software into the GIS parcel fabric. But in order to do that, we have a big project, a big mountain that has to be done first. And what that is, is all of our current parcels, we have over 50,000 parcels in the county. All of those parcels need to be put into the GIS map and that's what this proposal was for. So I put the proposal or the bid out about a month ago. We got seven proposals and they were all really good. I do appreciate all the companies that took time to put in a proposal. And me and Ken went through those proposals and the one that we felt met our needs the best was the one by Sunrise Engineer, Engineering, sorry, in the amount of 272,350 dollars. And we did do this on, so let me read you exactly what it said in the RFP. It says, this project will be done in a multi-year phase approach, starting in 2020 with the most populated areas of Iron County first. Each year's budget will be contingent on the county commission's approval of the project budget with no guarantees of future money from year to year. So basically we'll start the project this year with the money that is already budgeted in my budget. And then next year we'll see what we can get budgeted and see what we can get done for whatever's budgeted.
Question, was this also, this was your determined to be the best bid, was it also the lowest?
It wasn't the lowest. We had a few that were lower, but they weren't actually complete. They were only bidding on a part of the project, not the whole thing.
Well, I'm ready to make a motion unless there's further discussion.
Good, Mike?
Yep. I move that we approve of the bid version and remapping project that we put out the bid awarded to Sunrise Engineering in the amount of 272,350 dollars.
Second.
350 or 352?
270,000, 350?
Yeah.
272,350.
I'm sorry, I wrote two. Sorry, go ahead.
Is that what you said?
Alma had it right. I had it wrong. 272,350.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to as described by Commissioner Adams. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Sunrise. Okay, item number eight, discussion of possible approval of an interlocal agreement regarding the location of justice court proceedings based on location of the traffic infraction.
Can I give you some background on this? All right. I believe this was on the agenda last meeting and Chief Berg is here so he can correct me if I'm saying something that's not right. And the background is that my understanding, Parowan currently, their justice court currently has jurisdiction for justice court offenses or traffic court offenses that occur on I-15 between mileposts 74 and 79. So that you understand where that is. The south Parowan exit is 75, the north Parowan exit is 78. So it'd be one mile south and one mile north of the two Parowan exits. Good so far? So that's the current state of affairs. Parowan, Parowan's legal counsel reached out to me and provided me a copy or a proposed interlocal agreement that would like to increase the court, Parowan Justice Court's jurisdiction. The agreement that he proposed says 72 to 82. I believe what they intend or what they would like is for it to be 71 to 82. And what that is, is between, everything between Summit, Summit exit and the Paragona exit. So that would be increasing the jurisdiction of the court. Let's see. That's another three miles.
Eleven miles.
And another two. So I think another five. No, another six?
Eighty-two.
I don't do math. Good.
Seventy-one to eighty-two, so.
Six. I think it's six, additional six miles. So.
So eleven total?
That's what they would like to do. The suggestion is that it might make sense to go to Paragona for them because they do provide law enforcement to Paragona pursuant to an agreement or a contract, I believe, with the town of Paragona. The Iron County Sheriff's Office does not provide law enforcement. Well, I think they will back up, but they're not the first responders to Paragon. Also, I think this suggestion is that Summit makes sense because when highway patrol or sheriff's deputies or whoever is patrolling the freeway, you know, it's hard to know what jurisdiction am I in because it kind of can cross in and out of there. And you don't know exactly where you are when you initiate a traffic stop. However, I mean, for point of reference, it doesn't matter so much where they pull the car over. It matters where they see the violation. But anyway, it would, it would, it's thought that it would be easier if there was some definite structure, like a freeway on ramp and off ramp or an overpass as opposed to a mile marker that's just a near post that might be hard to see. So it makes sense to go from a more solid structure to another solid structure so that it's easier for the law enforcement officers to know where they, they have jurisdiction. That is what's being proposed and requested in the agreement. We would just, if you wanted to adopt the agreement, I would suggest that we change everywhere it says 72 to 71. But that's the purposes of the agreement. It would just be allow, to allow the Parowan Justice Court to have jurisdiction between those two freeway on ramps and off ramps. The agreement would also have to be approved by, I think, the judicial council, the state before it was official. So just because we decided to do it and Parowan decided to do it, it wouldn't necessarily change anything until it went to, to be approved by the state. And once it's approved by the state, then it would go into effect. County attorney's office doesn't necessarily have a position. You guys can do whatever you want.
Just for a little more information on that, I, geez, I went and met with him from the highway patrol and they ran some reports. So I was just curious how many stops are included in those, those areas from 71 to 74, which is from Summit to the south exit of Parowan. From August 1st, 2019 to July 31st, 2020, there was 282 stops. And then from 79 to 82, which was the north Parowan exit to Paragona, there was 147. So that's 429. He did not have a report, he was an email it to me, but I haven't seen it yet, of the actual 74 to 79 of Parowan to Parowan. And doing, and if, just to put it in context, the, the total number of stops in Iron County in that same period of time was 6,703. So it's about 6% of the stops between the Parowan and Parowan exits. And that was just some information I, and initially I, I was weighing this and I talked to Commissioner Blake and being a law enforcement, law enforcement, he reminded me that, that a lot of times the Parowan Police Department responds to situations from Summit to Paragona first because they're closest. Of course, that could vary based on where, where the highway patrol is at the time. But so in my mind, I, I, I felt like that was okay, based on that information.
I also met with, I met with Judge Miller and Lori, the administrator of the justice court. And they didn't have any objections to this either. I, I, and to boil it down as a, to a, to a simple-minded cop, to, to, not that cops are simple-minded, but the, I think to have a, a point of reference such as an overpass, to know what the traffic stop is made, you have to click a box as to which court it goes into as far as jurisdiction. If I know that this occurred from this, this overpass to this overpass and that goes to Parowan, it's a lot easier than trying to figure out maybe exactly what mile marker I am. And on the backside of that, the court, if, if I as a police officer write, click the wrong box for the milepost that's indicated on the ticket, on the backside, the court has to go through that and, and it's paperwork and time to adjust that jurisdiction and to get that offense into the right court. So it's, it's not just the ease of knowing exactly where you are and which to write it in, but on that back end, it does take some administrative time to sort that out if that's wrong. And I think that this lessens the chances for that information to be wrong on the initial citation. So it should save us some time on the back end of administrative costs as well with the court.
I'll entertain a motion.
I would move for approval of an interlocal agreement regarding the location of the justice court proceedings based on location of the traffic infraction. And note that that would be milepost 71 through milepost 82 would be the jurisdiction of the Parowan Justice Court.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to create that interlocal agreement regarding the location of justice court proceedings based on location of the traffic infraction to change from what it is now to the 71 through 82, which is the Summit structure to the Paragona structure exit. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number nine, approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Bureau of Land Management to be a cooperating agency in the development of an environmental impact statement regarding evaluating amendments to the federal livestock grazing regulations. Mike Werthen.
Thank you, Commissioner. The MOU is a agreement that the county will cooperate with the Bureau of Land Management in developing of an environmental impact statement for the grazing west wide. This is a programmatic environmental impact statement and therefore this is the first time we've, we've entered into such agreement on a, on a programmatic one. So I'm not sure how they will handle it. I assume the meetings will probably be a Zoom meeting or by video, something like that. But anyway, it's, it's standard boilerplate language that we will cooperate with them and, and provide them local information on grazing, on demographics, on whatever else they need. And also our resource management plan that the county prepared in 2000, I think it's 15 or 16. So anyway, it's something that most of the counties, at least the, the public land counties are requesting. So that's basically it.
I think it's a no-brainer for us to have cooperating cooperating agency in any of these kind of things. So I would move approval of the memorandum of understanding with the Bureau of Land Management to be a cooperating agency in the development of an environmental impact statement regarding evaluating amendments to the federal livestock grazing regulations.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded as described. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Hey, Mike. The commissioner name wasn't updated there.
I brought it up to him before too.
We'll just fix it.
Oh, you got it?
You got it.
Oh, do you want me to sign this one then? Okay. There you go. Thanks, Mike.
There's that interlocal. I just changed it to reflect 71.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, gen item number 10, personnel.
Hello?
How are you?
Morning.
Thank you.
So do we want to do, just go A, B, C, D individually?
Entirely up to you. If you'd like me to read entirety for all of the names, I'm happy to do that or I can do them separate.
Maybe you want to break out the policy on its own? Do the others together?
Break the out. So do A, B, and C together? All right, let's do the, let's do the A, B, C together.
All right. So first for your consideration is in the Children's Justice Center for new hire Kathleen Kraft, who was chosen after a competitive recruiting and interview process to backfill for the vacant part-time administrative coordinator position effective date 9/21/2020. And in the corrections department, I have two for your consideration. First is for Pierce Robertson, who has completed all the requirements and was selected to be promoted from a deputy three to a corporal with corresponding pay to fall within county guidelines effective date 9/6/2020. Next, in the corrections department is for Jared Hanson, who has completed all requirements and has been selected to be promoted from a corporal to a sergeant with corresponding pay to fall within county guidelines effective date 9/6/2020. In the sheriff's office, I have two as well for your consideration. First is for the approval of new hire Josh Nielsen, who was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and interview process to backfill for the vacant deputy one position effective date 9/21/2020. And next for the sheriff's office as well is Diana Evans, who was selected from the most recent competitive and interview process to backfill for the vacant part-time secretary position effective date 9/21/2020.
Any discussion?
I'd move for approval of new hire Kathleen Kraft as a part-time administrative coordinator in the Children's Justice Center effective date 9/21/2020. Note that that is a backfill position. In corrections, approval, promotion for Pierce Robertson from deputy three to a corporal, that effective date being 9/6/2020. So approve the promotion for Jared Hanson from corporal to sergeant effective date 9/6/2020. And in the sheriff's department, approval of new hire Josh Nielsen as deputy one effective date 9/21/2020. Note that that is a backfill. And also approve employment for Diana Evans as a part-time secretary effective date of 9/21/2020. And also note that that is a backfill position.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for the changes in personnel A through C as described by Commissioner Blake. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we'll go to Dee.
Perfect. Commissioner Blake and I had a discussion a couple of weeks ago about military policy. And after reviewing section 21, I thought it was kind of relevant to modify it to include SOU SARA laws and that kind of thing that, and some of the policies that we've already been implementing to just kind of put it down on paper and solidify it a little bit. I've discussed it with all of the active members of military that work within Iron County just to get their take and, and make sure that their voices are heard and that they were represented as well. So this is kind of a collaborative effort and I'm happy to read it in its entirety if you'd like me to. If not, I don't know if, John, if you wanted to pull it up, I don't know if it's included in the packet.
It is.
The new, it's, it's 100% changed, I guess I should say. So modification might be an understatement. But I wanted to make sure that the first paragraph is, is most relevant. The rest of it incorporates the U.S.A.R. laws almost word for word. So maybe I don't even need to go through all of that, but I'll read the first section. A benefited full-time employee who is a member of the National Guard or Military Reserves and is on official two-week continuous yearly training with provided proof is entitled to paid military leave not to exceed 40 hours each calendar year. Paid military leave may not be used toward training that takes place one weekend per month. And if you'd like to, I'm, I'm happy to read the whole thing. I'm.
You want to, you want it for the record, John, or?
Probably for the record.
Probably be good. Let's go ahead and do it.
All right. So one, an employee may use a combination of military leave, accrued leave, or leave without pay during military leave. Communicate desired use of leave to human resource team before departure. A, accrued sick leave shall only be used if the reason for leave meets the conditions as outlined in Iron County Policy Section 29. Two, an employee on military leave isn't eligible for any service awards or non-performance administrative leave the employee would otherwise be eligible to receive. Three, an employee shall give notice of any official military orders upon release, receipt, sorry, to department head and human resource team. Four, upon release from official military orders under honorable conditions, an employee shall be placed in a position in the following order of priority. A, if the period of service was less than 91 days, the employee shall be placed in the services or in the same position the employee would have held in the continuous employment of the employee had not been interrupted by the service. B, if the period of service was for more than 90 days, the employee shall be placed in a position of seniority status and salary of the position held on the date of commencement of the service in the uniformed services or in the position of like seniority status and salary, the employee would have had, held if the continuous employment of the employee had not been interrupted by the service. C, if the disability incurred or aggravated while on official military orders, Iron County shall adhere to the Uniform Service Employment and Reemployment Acts Rights Act, which is UCera, United States Code Title 38, Chapter 43. D, the cumulative, or cumulative? There you go. Thank you. Length of time allowed for reemployment may not exceed five years. This rule incorporates reference UCera 20 CFR 1002 dot 103 for the purposes of calculating cumulative time. See, I said it right that time. E, an employee is entitled to reemployment rights and benefits, including retirement contributions and health insurance. Five, in order to be reimplied, an employee shall present evidence of military service and A, for service less than 31 days, return at the beginning of the next regularly scheduled work period on the first full day after release from service unless impossible for unreasonable through no fault of the employee. B, for service more than 30 days but less than 181 days, submit a request for reemployment within 14 days of release from service unless impossible for unreasonable through no fault of the employee. Or C, for service more than 180 days, submit a request for reemployment within 90 days of release of service. Six, an employee may elect to prepay for their portion of covered benefits while on military leave without pay. Seven, Iron County shall adhere to all laws and regulations as outlined in the Uniform Service Employment and Reemployment Rights Act or UCera.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions on that discussion?
No.
Entertain a motion?
I move approval of amended personnel policy, section 27 concerning military leave.
Second.
Moved in seconded to approve the amended personal, personnel policy, section 27, military leave as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
We'll go to our non-delegated items. Number one is prey dogs. And seeing none there, or county boards. Any, any things we need to do there?
No.
That's good. All right. Therefore, we will, chair declares this meeting adjourned. Thank you.